Now, I don't have the date in front of me. April 23rd, 2014, 9 o'clock, and we are in Courthouse Square, Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem, for a Joint Board of Commissioners and Salem Area Mass Transit District meeting. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Sophie, join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. I'm Sam Brentano, this is Commissioner Carlson. Jerry Thompson from the Transit District. Would you introduce those here today?
Certainly. Good morning, everybody. On my far right is Kate Tarter, and Brad Coy is next to her, and Marcia Kelly is next to me, and I'm Jerry Thompson.
I don't know if I say welcome. This is your room too, but I'm glad we're all here.
Yes.
The first item...
I noticed you have your sign up.
Yeah, well, we could have split it, I know. I thought about that.
Halfway.
Anyway, you'd only had 20% if we'd ended that. Our first... Okay, I gotta get this meeting in order. Our first item is a presentation from Structural Presentation Systems, Case Forensic Questions and Answers, and then we will have a contract change to talk about later. So John Latimer, you're up there. Do you mean to start this presentation, or whoever? And if you just introduce yourself, please, and go ahead.
Me?
Anybody.
I'm John Latimer. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer of Marion County, and I'd like to introduce...
Ken.
What's your name?
Ken.
Oh, yeah. Ken Oliphant from Case Forensics, and Dave Clark from Structural Preservation, and Jay Thomas from Structural Preservation, and my good colleague Alan Pollock from the Transit District. And Dave is going to do the presentation.
Wonderful. So Dave, will you pull that microphone right close and go ahead and begin?
Certainly. Actually, we're gonna start with Jay Thomas here.
Okay.
Good morning. And although we've had a few meetings here in the last few years, it's fabulous to be in here on carpet and a nice painted room. Congratulations. The presentation we put together is just a brief overview of kind of a timeline of how we got here, and a final scope and operations review, and also can I talk a little bit about his perspective from the owner's aspect? So, obviously, this timeline started well before we were introduced to this project before, which was about March 2011, and there was quite a big bit of baggage green coming ground and finger pointing, and who's to blame, and what went wrong, and it's worse than you thought, and your nice building was starting to melt away right in front of your eyes. So, our first contact came with your task group in March of 2011, as I mentioned. And I remember coming in and getting about a four or five hour indoctrination of what was wrong, and some of the technical issues, and some of the logistical issues, a little bit of political salt sprayed on it. And it was kind of interesting. And we're in this business, so this looked like a big challenge. And over time, we, even through this process, we kind of said, "What the heck are we doing here? Is this really... what's gonna happen?" And to your credit, between about six months, from March till October, you came up with a process. And that process was to reach out to the industry for people who could bring different ideas and put competitive bids together, kind of in a design-build mode. So, in December, here's a pre-bid team. This Motley Crue here is one of the teams that showed up, some carpet baggers from a different town, and started the process. And that process went from January to February. We had a two-month window of this bidding process, which is pretty intense, of analyzing the building, looking at reports, doing some analysis. And this is a picture of some of us on the day before our deadline to put together a 500-page presentation package that was coming to you for a proposal. And actually, I timestamped it up there. It was actually the day we had to do it, because it was 3:01 a.m. And I don't mention that to show off that we're hard workers. It's just that, if you think about, that's human nature. We don't change much between college and high school. We do things last minute, and we fit the task to the space of the schedule. So, that led to a very interesting negotiating process, which was almost from May to September. And what made it interesting and complex is this was not your standard purchasing of some services. There were some really intricate technical and business aspects that had to be dealt with for both sides, on scope, and quantities, and insurance, and warranties, and submittals, and things of that nature. And I'll save you counting heads, but in this room, there are 28 people that were on that negotiating team that had many meetings and many webinars and things like that. And even with 28 people, I can tell you, it was an enjoyable process. And I'll borrow John's words about the whole process, which no one was happy, which means it was good negotiation. One of the things that Peggy gave us when we came into the first meeting was a structural contract exclusion card. She said you can have six exclusions during this process. And on the bottom it said, "When the card's fully punched, you have to sign the contract and get the work started." Except when she handed it to us, it had five punches in it already. So, in November, we kind of put our stake in the ground and hunger shingle outside, and the project started. And that kind of brings us to today. We're out on the sign that said we're gonna complete in May of 2014. So we made it by seven days, if we count today as day one. So, I'm a... I played football all my life and through college, and so a lot of my life lessons came from playing football, which is a sport of fighting off, you know, bad things, and getting up and fighting back. So, I always look back at some of these projects like this, and I'd say, "How would I describe it?" And I found this quote, and it's from a famous college... our famous coach, and it says, "Real glory is getting knocked to your knees then coming back. That's the real glory, that's the essence of it." Well, this building, the people that kind of are sitting here today, the owners, we all got knocked on our butts a few times in this process, right? But we got back up, and we won. We won, you won, the people and the businesses of this city and this county won, and it was through a lot of hard work. However, one person didn't win. I have to make a public apology to the restaurant at the Red Lion Hotel. I think it's called the Willmet River. Because early in this process, my gang found out that Monday night was an all-you-can-eat prime rib night. And it's pretty good, and I think we put a dent in their business. But they're probably saying the paper, "We're leaving," so they're gonna probably be happy we're getting out of town. So, just as a couple special thanks and notes to the governing body, your Joint Board, you know, the owners, Marion County and Transit. You guys made some really tough decisions that had very little public support with a mountain of PR on top of you to move forward with this, to make it a successful project. You tasked this task group, head up by Jeff James, and many of his other people that helped him out on that process, that really kept this thing alive through some pretty dark days and valleys in the process. Your contract negotiating team, which eventually morphed into your representatives during the project, from the county, John Latimer, Jan Fritz, Peggy Mitchell, Bruce Armstrong, and Barb Young, from the Transit Group, Alan, Greg Snyder, and Ben, were absolutely a pleasure to work with and did a great job. And we also could not have done it without some help from local contractors and engineers and architects and suppliers. People like Dalky, Carlson White, BMPG, EES, Ken's company, Case. Ken was great to work with. And really, the Salem County Building Department, Rebai and his group really made an extra effort for us. It was a lot of different permitting processes and things that are not normal, and things that had to be checked out on job sites as it went. And they kept up with us. It was a huge help to the job. Before I stop, I have just a quick letter from the owner and founder of Structural Preservation. He says, he asked me to read it to you. Dear Commissioners, Board Members, Support Teams for the CH2 project. As we all move forward to the completion of this interesting adventure, I'd like to take this occasion to thank you all for the opportunity afforded us to work on this project, as well as your trust in Structural Preservation Systems' design-build team to deliver a fresh and functioning facility. Your leadership and commitment have truly taken a difficult situation and turned it into a positive event. Although Structural has completed thousands of strengthening projects in the past, I can say with confidence that the entire experience and process of working with your teams at CH2 have created a new high watermark for our company. We should all be proud of not just the end result, but also the processes and cooperation between of us from negotiations through conducting the work. This was a key component to the success of this project. Thank you and be safe. Peter Emmons, Founder/CEO, Structural Group. I will tell you a personal note. This was an enjoyable, gratifying, and fun project, and those are words you typically not do here around construction projects, let alone remediation. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jay. So, we wanted to take this opportunity, now that we know, you know, where we came from, where we are right now, but just talk about how we got there, through the operations portion of this. So we're gonna go through a bit of a final scope review, operations review, some of the things that we did to accomplish this difficult project. So when we first got here, after the contract was awarded, the first step that we needed to do was field investigations. We know that there was a lot of investigation performed up to the point to help us put together an initial preliminary design, but further investigation needed to be performed before we could actually begin designing and performing the work. Also, we needed to take into consideration schedule. Obviously, getting the building back to the county, to Transit, was very important, and we needed to figure out the best way to do this. So in doing this, we looked at the entire building and tried to figure out where could we start work most efficiently first. That's why we chose the Transit Mall. And the Transit Mall garage, the columns down there are all exposed, so it gave us a place where we could work immediately. So we had our design engineers immediately start working on designing that component of the project, then working their way through the building itself on all the different components. So, putting together a detailed schedule and making sure that everybody was on board with this was very important to us in the beginning of the project. Kind of part and parcel with that are the permit packages. We recognized, as a design-build project, we needed to do both at once. We couldn't wait until a tire design was completed before we started with the construction work. Rather, we wanted to make sure a certain portion of the design was completed in a certain section, begin working on there, and have that train just move along. So that was very important. So, we split the permitting up into, I think, about nine different packages with the city, so we could individually attack each one of these different areas of the repair and move forward. Now, in terms of the project itself, right at the beginning, from the planning stages, construction safety was of utmost importance. This is for our team, for visitors on the site, for all the subcontractors and subconsultants, everybody on board here. In Structural, we have a safety culture called Safety 24/7, meaning that it happens both on and off the job set. It's something that we believe in. So creating a culture of safety amongst all of the workers and everybody was very important. And we did this by a buy-in from everybody, by engaging the entire team, down to the technicians and the safety decisions that we had, meeting regularly about safety, getting their feedback on how we can get better. And we feel that, looking back on the project, we've had an exceptionally safe and successful project out here, something that we're very proud of. Also very important with this project is construction quality control. We know that, in large part, this is part of the reason why we are here. This is what we do as our business. We fix problems. So, in order to make sure that we don't have repeat of these same problems, a rigorous quality control program is very important. So this started with having a quality control plan. And as part of that plan, it included mock-ups, training, drafting procedures for all of the different components of work that we performed, and then having inspections to make sure that what we're doing is exactly what we're supposed to be doing. This is an example right here of one of the inspection stickers that we had. So we didn't just have one, or two, or three. We had four different inspecting entities getting eyes on this project. So we made sure that what we were doing was right, that when we turned this over, that we were 100% confident that it met the design, and that it was gonna perform and function the way it was supposed to. Now, getting into the work itself, we've split the work into two different components. We have life-safety work and serviceability work. So first, talk about the life-safety work. This is the bones of the building, the thing that's actually holding this building up. So we can call it the strengthening that we did. And with the strengthening, you can look at different methods that we used to strengthen this building. So I'm gonna go through these one by one here, just to show you guys what actually was performed. And all of these pictures are from the job work that was performed. In the garage, we had to do spread footings enlargement in certain areas, in spots where the footings needed to be upgraded to handle the loads that were being imposed on them. And so this is an example of one that we did in the garage. Columns throughout the building, we used FRP strengthening to wrap these columns, both for seismic reasons and just for strengthening reasons. In certain areas where FRP alone was not sufficient, we actually did column enlargement. This is a very complex process. It might seem simple. The principle is simple behind it. You're taking a column that was a certain size, and you're, in essence, making it bigger. But to do that, you need to bond the two concretes together. You need to make them act as one. And to do that, we used a specially self-consolidated concrete that we pumped up five stories in the air, 400 feet away from the truck. It was quite an operation that we did. And this is... That started from the surface preparation, all of the different things that we did to make sure that this was gonna function and act as one solid, single column. Punching shear strengthening. In certain locations, we needed to add shear caps or cast-in-place drops to the building for punching shear reasons. This is an example in the garage. One thing that we recognized that was very important is we needed to return this building back in a way that it was serviceable, that it was usable. And if you had a garage full of a bunch of caps that were impeding on cars driving through, it would not work. So if you take a look at this one, we have a very wide but shallow cast-in-place drop versus, in the office building, we had deeper, and I guess a little bit more close to the column shear caps, ultimately performing similar roles, but in different spaces. So, again, just making sure that we did not impede on the office space and its ultimate use was very important throughout the process when we were performing this work. Slab strengthening. In certain locations, particularly the North Block, we used FRP sheets to strengthen the slab. You can see this is an actual installation there. And also, the shear walls, we used FRP as well to strengthen these slabs, and also doing epoxy injection in certain spots, too. Now, on the Transit Mall deck, we had a very large concrete overlay. We did this in conjunction with the shear caps down in the garage below to strengthen this slab. Just as an aside, we actually just got an email from one of our local engineers in the city commenting about when he was in the garage, he recognized that he didn't hear the buses above him, outside of when, I guess, their turbochargers would start up, or maybe they'd hit a grate. He didn't hear that. And before, you know, two, three years ago, you knew every time a bus was going over top of that thing. There was even a diaphragm effect on your ears when the pressure changed in there. So, this is just a picture of the tons and tons of rebar that was installed there, thousands of square feet of concrete overlay that was put in there to strengthen this structure. It's also an example of all the additional steel that was placed in there. So another component of the work is the serviceability side of this work. And we understand that to get to all of these components of the building, to strengthen it, we needed to take apart some of the finishes and then put them back together again. But also, as a result of some of the movements that this building experienced, and some other maybe construction defects that were found, other components of the building needed to be addressed. So we're gonna go through and talk about these here. In the garage, the foundation walls were leaking, and you could see that throughout. And so we used chemical injection grouting to stop these leaks. And that happened around the perimeter of the garage wall. Out on the Transit Mall, because where there were pavers before, we were now taking up that space with concrete, we needed to put a new trafficable waterproofing system on this deck, so it performed both those purposes. Previously, I think we mentioned that they used this on the LaGuardia Airport runway, and actually, bridges around Oregon. We also changed the appearance, it's more of an aesthetic thing, of the sidewalks. Previously, where they had some pavers, we used a new medallion to kind of give it a fresh look. This was something that the architect worked very closely with us on. And ultimately, you've got a functional Transit Mall out there that looks very nice. In terms of the building itself, protection and access were key. We needed to make sure that we protected the public from the operations that we had, still maintaining what was the Transit operations around the perimeter of the property, but also still so we could gain access to our work. So you can see that there. Exterior masonry repairs. There's various locations throughout the building where, because of the movement of the building, we needed to replace masonry in certain sections. We needed to actually remove it and replace it. There were also flashing repairs throughout the building that needed to be performed, because the configuration of the flashing originally was allowing water to get in. And you guys might even remember that from back when you guys were here. So that was work that was performed. Also, other building envelope work was done, from the inside, to basically strengthen the building's skin, the building envelope. You see those kickers that were installed there. We also had work on the curtain walls to address some of the leaking that was happening there, replacing some of the windows where there had been insulated glass unit failures. And also, on the fifth floor, to address a waterproofing concern, we had to remove and reinstall all of the windows at that location. So various building envelope work was performed, both from the exterior and the interior of the building. Now, another thing you guys may recall, certain sections of the building, you had that funhouse effect when you walked through. And we addressed this by putting a self-leveling material. Now, while it's not perfectly flat, it is much less noticeable. It's certainly within the standards of normal construction. And you can feel the difference as you walk through the building with this leveling compound that we used. Now, important thing, I think we mentioned that we partnered up with Dalky Construction for the work that we did on-site. Structural handled a lot of the structural repairs and the exterior building envelope things, where we have a lot of expertise in. But Dalky has a lot of expertise in interior finishes, the MEP work. And this is just an example of some of the stuff that they oversaw. We had HVAC that needed to be moved around columns and then replaced, upgrades of the system where there were some, you know, end-of-life concerns, you know, just basic failures due to age. We had work that was involved with electrical, both from a low voltage and data line standpoint, and then removing and replacing electrical around locations that we had worked, that we performed. Same thing with plumbing. So there was a lot of different work that was involved with get everything away from the areas we were working, and then putting it all back. And that's the guts of the building. And once you start getting to the skin, you can see these interior finishes where we moved around walls, replaced them again, installed your drywall, your sheet rock, painting, and everything, all the different components of interior finishes that require to get to this, a finished product. And as you walk around the building, you can see, you know, it looks fantastic. It looks like a brand-new building. And, you know, I think that the entire team did a very great job. I think in closing, you can be sure that the project itself is structurally sound. You have a brand-new-looking building, and I think that it was a big success on everybody's part. So, with that, I'm gonna pass over the microphone to Ken Oliphant.
Thanks, Dave. Hi, my name's Ken Oliphant. I'm with Case Forensics. I'm a structural engineer and not a public speaker, so I appreciate your letting me limp through this. I was given two slides maximum. I negotiated and got three, so there's not a whole lot here. But I'll tell you, it's been a pleasure working with you folks, your project management team, and Structural. I don't think we could have done this without the vision and the "this project will not fail" mentality. And, you know, it all comes down from the top. My wife tells me what our family's gonna do, and it comes down and we execute. And same thing here. You all had a vision, and like I said, this project cannot fail. They, John, Alan, and the rest of the project management team, they were repeating that on a daily basis. Structural knew that, I knew that, and everyone was engaged to make sure that that wasn't gonna happen. History would not repeat itself. And, you know, to execute, it does take time. And I applaud you. Jay mentioned, you know, the long process, but, you know, there was a forensic investigation dating back to 2010. We were looking at RFPs, trying to find the right team in '11, and, boy, the negotiations were a long process. But it was really a critical part of making sure this project was successful. And finally, a couple years of remediation. I'll tell you, I was at a Structural Engineers Association of Oregon, you know, one of those evening conferences or evening meetings, and a buddy of mine, he's a structural engineer, and I said, "What have you been up to?" And we're sharing. And he said... I explained I was working as an owner's representative, and Case was doing quality assurance on this project, on Courthouse Square. And he got big bug eyes, and you could tell. He... Or he even said, "We made a decision. We weren't gonna touch that project." And that says a lot. There was a lot of public sentiment, and guy... You know, this is an educated structural engineer who didn't know anything, but he had bought in that, you know, you can't repair it. And I think the key was, you found a great contractor and a design team that knew how to do it, because it was doable, and you all made that decision. I applaud you there. And really, from a QA process, how do you make sure a project does not fail? And it's by engaging a great team and then staying on top of it. And, you know, it started with the design and peer reviews, internal peer reviews, owner peer reviews, City of Salem plan checks. There were four different architectural and building envelope packages and five separate structural design packages. Everything from the office building, the lateral system, the Transit Mall structural. And, you know, it's... In a fast-track, design-build project, you have to take these bits and pieces. And each one of these packages was reviewed at several levels and very technically detailed. Again, the project can't fail. From an owner's side, we were really looking at what structural preservation systems, what their internal QA and QC specs were and their protocols. And we worked together to make sure that everyone was gonna be happy with how the process was moving forward. A lot of different repairs, a lot of different types of repairs, life-safety and serviceability. Not only that, you all had a special inspector here. And we, as a team, were reviewing the special inspection reports. That's a critical, you know, sort of red flags can show up in those reports. Fortunately, we had a pretty darn good run with Special Inspector, and again, you had a great design team. Coordination with the City of Salem. I was on the phone with Rebai almost on a weekly basis. Again, you've got nine design packages. We're talking, making sure that we all feel good about how the design is looking. And we're here. Success. And then, the old saying, "Trust but verify." These are great guys, but you always... Extra sets of eyes always helps. And that was an important part of the quality for this project. And then finally, getting what you pay for. We had a great contract that outlined a lot of scope items, and just making sure that everything got executed the way you wanted it. So again, project can't fail, and I think we did a good job there with that. Final slide. Remediation is complete. The building and the Transit Mall are safe. And again, can't applaud you enough. The right decision was made. And I'm really excited. As a structural engineer, you really run through a career, and you get maybe three to five of the great projects that you're excited to be on. I've been on a couple Space Launch Complex. Wow, I can't wait to... I'll be telling that when I'm in my rocker. This is a project as well, that is one of those top three, top five projects that I'll be taking my family to share. This was a great success. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you have questions, members?
I was just gonna ask the same. I'll start it out by saying thanks to all of you, one for coming today, but for all the great work here. We're mostly moved in, and it is holding up to expectations and advertisements. So, comments from anyone? Marcia?
I think one of the things that I would like to discuss with our board is sending the project, the task force, another reminder and a thank you with a special one to, I believe, Jeff James, because I think that he helped us move through all of that negative mountain of PR by, you know, just bringing some community feeling, but expertise to the project. And I think it would be really appropriate to send him a special thank you.
I echo Marcia's comments. And I really... The Transit Board really thanks you folks for coming in and bailing us out. That $53 million was a little bit much. And Jay came in with his half of that, pretty much, and that was exactly what we needed at the time.
Kate?
One comment I have is that I just really think this was a fantastic process in the way that we did the RFP. And it's an example that people should remember and follow. And I think one of the major successes is that you were willing to put up your own money to put in a proposal, knowing that there may not be a winner. And that, to me, is really unique, and cities should remember that. And I think part of the success is that it really was you coming together with your own dollars. You're saying, "We can do this." That was, I think, different than some of the proposals that you see go out there with RFPs. So I hope this is something you can put on your resume that stands out. So I hope this is something you can put on your resume that stands out from other projects, and it was worth your investment in putting the money for the RFP.
I want to thank you also for coming in for a great job. We were looking back, actually, we were moving back, and I had not thrown away one paper with regard to Courthouse Square. I saw this whole stack of papers on top of a notebook and file folders full of things was going through it and found a page, and I think you quoted from it at the dedication ceremony. So I don't know if it got added to, but the paper I saw said that we had 103 public meetings, including 27 community meetings, three editorial board meetings. I mean, it just detailed the amount of public engagement that we had in this process. So in addition to the task force, I know we went on the speaker circuit, talked to some engineering groups, talked to different groups that had an interest. I know I talked to a group over at Willamette University that had an interest as well. And Jay, I was recalling when you came and did your presentation, and one of the things that you talked about was not only the importance of remediating the building and making sure that all of the things that you just described were done, but also gaining the confidence back, both of the public and of the employees. I mean, there were comments that we had from some of our employees that they would never go back in this building. I mean, people were kind of freaked out with all of, not just the newspaper headlines, but also just what they were experiencing here. So Jay, maybe I just give you a chance to just respond to your perceptions about how what you've done can provide confidence to the public and to the employees, in addition to all of the meetings and all of the work that we've done. Just maybe kind of wrap up in that regard, because I know, I was impressed when you mentioned that it wasn't just about the bricks and the mortar, it was about the whole public engagement with the project.
If I recall, I think I said you couldn't be 90% sure, you couldn't be 100% sure, you had to be 110% sure, which is a common theme that we see in remediation projects. People want more than, we want more confidence that that building, we don't want it back to 100%. Take it a little further, because the perception is something's wrong with it. That was our mission. And so there's a soft side to that, too. There's the emotional side. So everything in this building is if it was built today, meets current codes, current long-term loading factors and all the different things of that nature. And as mentioned earlier by Dave, go out in the garage and see what it feels like when the buses run over it. Or when you go in your offices and you'll see the windows don't leak and you don't have any moisture coming in the building, it creates long-term issues. All that's been brought up to speed as this thing was built, deconstructed, and put back together.
And could you just add a couple points? One is the 50-year life or whatever. What does that mean? So people understand what that means. And then the seismic, the earthquake side of it.
So when you remediate a building, you have to remediate it up to typically current code. So of course, you're in a seismic region here. So it was not only the physical loads of the buses and the people and the high-density files and all that stuff, it's also, it had to be brought up to speed for today, what we know about seismic events in a building. And that's a moving target, and if that changes every time there's a seismic event, we learn more things, so the code changes. What was the other one?
Fifty-year.
Fifty-year, okay. So a 50-year design is not a 50-year warranty. Fifty-year design says, "I'm going to take the materials that I use, and I'm going to, I know them, we've used them long enough that we can say, in 50 years, this is the strength loss they might have, and I'm going to use that as my, I'm going to take the lowest common denominator and possibly they could be at that, and I'm going to use those forces in my design. I'm also going to take the forces that structure could see. What, in 50 years, what's the highest seismic event it could see? What's the chance of being over?" So I increase the loads, I decrease the capacity of the material I'm using, and that's how I build a safety factor in. And it's based around the properties after 50 years or the events that could happen in 50 years, all based on statistics.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, would you indulge me for a couple minutes?
All right.
We had a great team here that worked on this building, and while we couldn't have done it without Jay and Dave and his group, because they're the real structural folks in fixing this building. And Ken and his oversight was critical in making sure that we got this done. There are some other folks that made this thing work. And, you know, you may not know, but we met with them every week. We spent a lot of time doing this, and I know my board, and I don't know about your board, Alan, didn't see much of us and didn't see much of me during the last few years. But we had some folks here that did monumental work on this building with the structural folks, and I'd like to thank them for you. You know, we all know Peggy Mitchell, she was our contract manager, and these folks know her very well because she was very nitpicky on the contract all the way through this, and they know that. Greg Snyder, who works for the Transit District, worked with us day in and day out from the Transit District standpoint and worked very hard on that.
John, you're going to put the microphone to your mouth rather than gesturing.
Sorry. And there's Bruce, our own attorney. Bruce worked with us through this. He came to almost all the meetings, Bruce Armstrong. And he and Ben Featherston, who is the attorney for the Transit District, worked hours and hours, weeks and weeks on the contract, and I think we got a very good contract. I mean, it's a lesson anybody building a building should learn, is how important that contract is, as well as the oversight of the operation. And, you know, we had other folks like Barb Young, who worked hard with this and did a lot of work on the project. But I think everybody here who worked on the project knows that the heart of it was Jan Fritz. Jan, what'd you do? You spent about a year of your life, or four years of your life on this thing, and she did a great job. And so I'd like to thank them. I think we all need to thank them for the hard work they did. I've got one other thing.
I'll only indulge you so far.
I know.
Well, I think the thing that amazes me, quite frankly, is how young the team is that's out here, but how professional they are and how well they've worked with both their subcontractors, our local folks, and our staff. It's been a great experience, and I really appreciate it. It's too bad that Dave Clark is so bad, but...
Thanks, John.
I just thought I'd throw that in for a little humor there.
Alan, go ahead.
I'd just like to follow up on what John said. Everything he said is true. It's been a great collaborative effort from the project team, our owner's rep, Ken, and the county and Transit District. But I do need to let the commissioners know that the county's team did yeoman's work and really helped the Transit District, because they really had the horsepower, and we couldn't have done it without the effort. And I just want to personally thank and let you know, I know you know how great they are, but let you know that the Transit District, it did not go unnoticed, the work they did on behalf of the whole group for us. So thank you, John, and all the team.
I just had one thing quickly. As there are groups now moving in sequentially into the building, and as I was coming off the elevator, actually, as I was coming down from the fifth floor, the elevator opened on the third floor, people with me from legal said, "Oh, the carpet looks so beautiful." So I wanted to let Jan know, because Jan was really involved in carpet selection concerns for a number of weeks.
Which was probably the hardest selection of every...
Oh, really?
Forget the seismic.
Right, yeah.
That was the easy part. Well, it's been a lot of fun, and I, for this board and Transit Board, just want to say thank you, not just to the group here, but everybody out there. We know what it took to get this done. And this part I'll say for myself, I'm so happy to be back. Thank you all. As you're leaving, just a message for Ken. I have a feeling, in the scheme of things, that this won't be in one of your top three or five projects you worked on before, when you look back at your career. Maybe top 20. Just write that down.
Number six.
All right, we have one action item that we need to separately decide on, and John, John Allen, ready to start presenting that. It has to do with approving order number nine that adds $13,573.06 to the Contract with Structural Preservation Systems LLC for the Courthouse Square remediation project. So if you want to bring the microphone right up, go ahead and start.
Mr. Chair, members of the Transit District Board and Commissioner Carlson, we have a change order number nine that hopefully will finish out the project. It's a combination of some ads and then some credits. If you'd like, I can, I hope you have them up there, but if you'd like, I can go through them very quickly.
We have had those presented to us. I don't know about Transit, apparently yes, too. So...
We talked about it in the works.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Alan, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, then let's...
Can we just have them just briefly say what it is so people watching would know what it is that we're going to? That would be useful.
In the building are what are called fire smoke dampers, and those dampers are throughout the HVAC system, and if there's a fire, they close to keep smoke out of the hallway so that people can exit the building. They keep them out of the hallways and out of the towers that, where you can walk down. So we had several of those that were damaged, we had to repair them. We had a little, you can't imagine how many light bulbs there are in this building, and so we had to replace a lot of them. We had, I think Transit had a door opener that needed to be fixed. And then Transit, we all got a credit for not doing some work in the restaurant that are going to be done by the contractor for the restaurant. So we got a credit for that. With all those lights, we had ballasts that burned out in the light fixtures, and those had to be replaced. Door hardware, you know, when you go through a building like this and you open and close doors, you don't count them, but my golly, there's a lot of doors in this building. And we had issues with door hardware, so we had to pay for those. There are carbon monoxide sensors in the garage, and those were old and had to be replaced. You can imagine if, at the end of the day, when everybody starts up their car, there are fans down there, and those CO sensors will turn those fans on to get the carbon monoxide out of the building. The fire, the guy that comes through to check for, fire marshal, that's the word I was looking for, required that we have some more exit signing than we'd had before, so we had to add that. The VA boxes, VAV boxes, those are the boxes that move the air throughout the building on each floor, needed repaired. We have a very complicated and expensive air conditioning system in the building on the roof, and we have to, we had some issues with air conditioner four, and we've got a credit on that. The transit space, the flooring, the VCT, we got a credit for that, that's being done separately. We had a lot of plumbing repairs in the building, I'm not sure they're done even yet. The exterior lighting and the stair towers down on the north block needed to be repaired. They weren't put in properly. We got credit for Torazo cracks in, I think this was in the Transit bathroom, and we had a mock-up that we had to pay for on the Torazo that had some streaks in it. And then the window failures, we've got a credit of $50,000 for that, and we will use that as we see any failures in the windows as we go along. Right now, the windows are fine with a couple exceptions that are being, that can be fixed from the inside, and we'll use that $50,000 to the extent we need to for those repairs. So that is a total of $13,573.06, with $5,000 for the county and $8,006 for the Transit District.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Well, let's, we'll take this as the Board of Commissioners first, Commissioner Carlson.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the Marion County Board of Commissioners approve this change order number nine, adding $13,573.06 to the Contract with Structural Preservation Systems LLC for the Courthouse Square remediation project, and that brings the new contract total to $25,074,761.42.
Two cents. All right, I'll second the motion. Some of that I didn't want to know, but I do.
More than 60.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, call a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and now Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, Transit District will take a vote on this also. I'd like to introduce Steve Evans on the right and John Hamill on the left. They arrived after we introduced the other ones. So we have all but one, and Bob Krebs is on a train someplace on his vacation, and so... Anyway, I'd accept the motion.
I move that Board approve change order nine in the amount of $13,573.06 for the Courthouse Square remediation project, bringing the change orders and the project to a close.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I won't vote here. I told Jerry before I voted everything, but I won't.
No discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you.
All right. That concludes our business in this joint meeting. Is there anything else anybody else would like to add?
Just that it'll be nice to be back tomorrow night for our board meeting in the new building, and then we'll have our sign up behind us.
That'll be special. All right, then let's call this meeting adjourned. We've just concluded a joint meeting with the Salem Kaiser Transit Board, and now we have the business for our own Marion County Board of Commissioners to take over or to continue on. It is still Wednesday, the 23rd of April, 2014, and we're in the sender hearing room, 555 Court Street Northeast. The first item is public comment. I...
I don't see anyone here.
Unless Lynn's hiding them in the back. No. All right, we'll move on from there, then we do have three consent items. Commissioner Carlson.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move today's consent calendar. Under Business Services Human Resources, approve recommendation to update and retitle the classification of Public Works Facility Supervisor to Public Works Facility and Service District Supervisor, and upgrade the pay grade 02.827. Under Finance, approve a quick claim deed to convey real property tax account number R31664 and number M124930. And under Sheriff, approve amendment number four to add $125,000 to the correct RX Pharmacy Services contract, which allows funds to cover the remainder of fiscal year 2013-14.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Further discussion? None. Call a question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. We do have no action items this morning or nor public hearings. The last thing we do need to accomplish is those places where, of note, the two of us will be together in the coming week. The first is this afternoon, 3:00 to 4:00, I thought it was 3:30, but we'll get at that. Willamette Jobs Council Meeting, Chameca Center for Business Industry, room 203, 626 High Street, Northeast in Salem. Next Monday, 9:00, Management Update, Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Board of Commissioners' Office, 555 Court Street, Northeast Salem. Tuesday, 9:00, one-on-one Department Head-Elected Officials Meeting with Rod Caukens from the Health Department, again, the Silverton Conference Room. from the Health Department, again, the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, the 29th, 10:00 to noon, a work session, Health Department, Public Health Strategic Planning, again, Silverton Conference Room. Next Tuesday, noon to 2:00, Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative Officer meeting, executive session if needed, that'll be in the Silverton Conference Room, too. Followed by at 2:30, something we haven't talked on for a little bit, 2:30 to 4:00, scheduled a work session having to do with Public Works School Zone, Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, the 29th, 4:15, one-on-one Department Head officials meeting with Bill Burgess, our clerk, Silverton Conference Room. And then next Wednesday, a bit fuller, board session here in this Senator Hearing Room, first floor, Courthouse Square Building, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. So, it's getting busy. We'll be starting on budget soon. We're talking with department heads, trying to get caught up. I thought, it didn't quite work, but our meeting today is kind of the closure, the end of this cycle with remediation of the building. And I thought of MacArthur closing off World War II, but it didn't quite fit. But I forget what, this book is closed, I believe, is what comes to mind, but something like that, we reached that point today. It's nothing like World War II, but it has been our own battle.
It has, and it's really nice being back, even though there's still cardboard boxes taped to the floors, and only one of the three elevators allows you to go up and down, because the other two are being used for moving. But I just know the employees are just very, every time they see me, big smiles, and very happy to be back. It is great being back in the Senator Hearing Room, our first day back. It's a little bit anticlimactic, because we didn't have really, I mean, we had the joint meeting, and then we've just had a little bit here for us, but we'll be back here. And I know for our staff in the board office, having not to pack up all of the materials and haul them in a car across, you know, blocks, and then retake everything down and come back over to the office, that's going to be a really big improvement in their lives. So, on so many levels, getting legal counsel, I saw, are you moved back in today, or is this...
We're moving in today.
Right.
We were packing up yesterday, and hopefully things are getting stacked up and all over as we speak.
So you won't have to drive across town to come see us and give us legal advice either, right?
No, we've been bouncing around, spending time in cars, going from meeting to meeting. So we look forward to it. Everyone's excited.
They had an office for you, did they, Bruce?
They tell me.
All right, we better get up...
Sometimes they tell me otherwise.
And you can get your furniture out, because your elevator, one of your elevators is working over there, is what I heard.
One of them, and the repair folks are there for the other larger elevator, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's ready today. But they'll be squeezing things into the little elevator.
All right. Either that, or just toss them over the rail, right?
I thought of that.
But the one thing we don't have here is balconies, like we had in the other space. But we'll take this any day.
That's probably to keep you from jumping, so that's all. I think that's by design. All right, anything else this morning? Then let's call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.